We'll call this meeting to order. Thank you all for joining us. We appreciate your attendance. If you have a communications device on you, please turn it to silence so that we can give you our full attention and you ours. Thank you for joining us. Council will stand for the pledge of allegiance and then we'll have an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holy Father, we come before you tonight to manage the issues that our town faces. While they are always challenges in which we all work so hard, we also recognize the beauty of the gift you've given us to be citizens of the town of Fort Mill. Please be with our community and with all that are here in attendance tonight and lead us in your direction. In his name we pray. Amen.
All right. Council members, you have received the minutes for our August the 12th council meeting and a September the 3rd budget workshop. Are there any changes, deletions, or additions?
I make a motion to accept the minutes I've submitted.
I have a motion to approve and I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you so much. Public comment. Pursuant to section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. Citizens will be given three minutes each. Christopher, we have someone to speak tonight. Thank you. I'm not good at this. Name. Who signed in? The person that signed this?
Oh, it might interest me. I thought it was just a sign in, just a sign in. I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine, you're fine, you're fine.
Well, you can get up and talk.
You just spoke. You got two minutes and 50 seconds left.
Welcome to our meeting and nice to have you. All right. Then we'll begin with presentation number one, the 10th Annual Fort Mill Scarecrow Crawl Presentation. Jacana Hester and everyone, this is a has become such a beloved event for our community. So Jacana, we're excited to hear.
We are very excited too that this is the 10th year. It's unbelievable to be celebrating this milestone. So some important dates for our 10th Annual Fort Mill Scarecrow Crawl. We will have the installation week on September the 27th through October the 3rd. And then the actual crawl will be October the 4th through the 31st. And we always try to promote all our area businesses, you know, make sure you visit them and eat at all our great restaurants while you're here. And then our strawberry queens will be voting on certain categories the week of October the 7th. And then we will have our Facebook voting by the public October the 11th through the 28th. And then we will announce the winners on October the 29th on our Town of Fort Mill social media. And then we ask our entries to remove their scarecrows on November the 1st and 2nd. So our Scarecrow Crawl Awards, as I said, they are strawberry queens, our teen miss and misses, Vanessa Kar, Lexi Ratliff, and Claire Olson. They will be judging for the most Fort Mill spirit, the best school, the best name, best overall, most creative, most complex, and then the best individual or family. And then our public on the Facebook page, they will vote for people's choice, best sponsor, and then the Town of Fort Mill best department scarecrow. And that is determined by most likes on Facebook. And this year, we are very excited because we have town, eight town departments competing the most ever. So and then winners will receive a trophy and then gift cards to local businesses. And this is some pictures from last year. Everybody always does an amazing job and that's what brings in thousands of visitors to our downtown area to enjoy it. And this is a map of the area. We will have scarecrows along Claiborne, Tom Hall, and it goes down to the Steel Street Station area. And then we have Main Street. We have a few on Academy and Railroad. And then North and South White Street and Millstone Park. And then it will go down into Walter Elijah Park. We will have them along the walking path there. And we will have safety signage around the downtown area. And we ask everyone to please be aware of the extra pedestrian traffic during the entire month of October. When you see these signs, especially slow down and be watchful of all the people walking around and crossing streets to look at all the scarecrows. And then you can follow Town of Fort Mill on social media, Facebook, Instagram, and X. And then for all event information and other town information, visit fortmillsc.gov. And so far, we have 180 entries this year.
Wow.
And we've got to cut it down. So we cap it at 150, so we have to put a few on the waitlist.
Oh, no.
But it's going to be an amazing year.
I was thinking we need to extend downtown. We need to build up. That way we could have more.
Just accommodate the scarecrow.
Yeah, just for the scarecrow crawl, exactly.
I'm good with that.
It's one of my favorite events. It really is because you see all the young folks out there walking, pushing strollers. They're visiting our vendors, not just our restaurants, but our merchants. And it's just a great small-town, large-town event.
Yes. And we have senior groups, preschools, all kinds of people that come through to see it. So it's amazing.
The creativity is amazing. My grandchildren love to walk and look at them. Funniest moment from the last 10 years though was, I believe, it's either last year or year before, we had a storm come through. And there was one as the old Charlotte Highway, I guess it's Nations Road, comes into the park and it blew the head off of one of them. And I remember we got a couple of calls on, "We shouldn't have headless." It wasn't headless before the storm. So it's been a wonderful activity in our community. It just feels perfect. So thank you for all the hard work and hopefully we'll figure out a way to host as many as we possibly can.
We're trying. Public works might get us back.
I love all the departments that are, you put a ton of time and effort into it.
True.
American Legion always brings it. They always have fantastic. And I know there's some rivalry between the fire department and the stormwater department. There's some.
Yeah, well, there's even heavier competition this year.
There's some beef right there. So it's going to be fun to see how they, see what they do, so.
Amazing. Well, thank you so much, Jacana. And if you'd like to move into presentation number two, it kind of is connected, Weekends on Main.
This year, we are hosting Weekends on Main on Fridays through Sundays, the first and third weekend, the 4th through the 6th, and the 18th through the 20th. And this, the purpose of this is to provide a pedestrian-friendly atmosphere during the Town Scarecrow Crawl, to provide a safer environment and walkability on Main Street due to the increased foot traffic. And then also to provide an opportunity for all our merchants to expand their footprint outside of their location. We received permission from SC DOT to close Main Street from Tom Hall intersection to Academy Street intersection during the weekends of October the 4th through the 6th and 18th through the 20th. And the closure times will be Fridays at 3:00 p.m. through Sundays at 10:00 p.m. on those weekends. And then our merchants have been contacted about the closure. And our merchants are allowed to expand their footprint outside of the area directly in front of their business. And then we have received positive feedback from the majority of merchants regarding closing Main Street for this purpose.
Yeah, that's one of my favorites. Ten Cut.
And they've actually come up with something new this year, so that'd be exciting. So again, the weekends are October the 4th through the 6th and the 18th through the 20th from Fridays 3:00 p.m. to Sundays at 10:00 p.m. And then due to a cancellation of an event of ours in Walter Elijah, our Family Fun Day earlier this year, these entertainers were gracious enough to let us reschedule them.
Awesome.
But this was the only dates that would work on their calendar, so we plugged them here on Weekends on Main. So Friday, October the 4th, we'll have Rick Hubbard Entertainment. This will be in the bandstand area. And he'll do three 30-minute shows at 6:00, 7:00, and 8:00 p.m. And he just does just fun, variety entertainment for kids and adults and just has a lot of fun. And then on Saturday, October the 5th, Spears Bubble Show. He was, America's Got Talent featured act on there. And he just does a lot of fusion of art, science, and magic with his bubbles. And he'll be doing three 30-minute shows at 11:30, 12:30, and 1:30. And then we also have some raving entertainment by Sigmund Theatrical that will be from 11:30 to 2:00 along Main Street. So our merchant guidelines are, our businesses are able to set up directly in front of their location only, and the town asks that everyone be considerate of their neighbors, even if they are closed. And then businesses can host outside vendors in their designated space, but are asked to not have any vendors that compete with any other Main Street businesses. If it is determined that more restrooms are needed, the town will supply these. The town will supply trash roll carts, but ask merchants to monitor during the weekend and refresh and empty as needed. And then the town also asks merchants to coordinate on the music varieties together so that they just do not overpower each other. If multiple businesses want to have outdoor music, we just ask them to work together on that. And then for DoorDash and Grubhub, the town asks the merchants to work together to designate spaces for that if they need it. And we ask the merchants to share or tag the town on their individual promotions for this event and will share on our social media platforms. And then if using a tent, they must be properly weighted per our fire marshal guidelines. And again, we provided the road closure approval for this, barricades, cones for the closure, the detour signs for traffic, roll carts. And we'll have signage out designating Weekends on Main, and then we will promote it on our town social media. And then our detours for this event, if you're traveling on Spratt, you will take Railroad Avenue, right on Railroad Avenue to Watson, left on Watson to Williamson, a left on Williamson, and then you proceed straight to Tom Hall and make a right on Tom Hall. And if you're traveling west on Tom Hall, the left lane turning onto Main Street will be closed. You have to proceed straight on Tom Hall to Claiborne, and then you make a right on White, which takes you out to 160. And then traveling east, you make a left on Claiborne off of 160, and then proceed straight to Tom Hall and then out 160 that way. And then we ask all trucks to use Claiborne Street and Tom Hall Street to detour Main Street. And earlier this year, town council approved a resolution designating Main from Tom Hall to Academy Street in the barricade zone as the site of a public event in which alcoholic beverages could be sold, possessed, and consumed, and authorized a special event permit for live music and sound amplifying equipment on these dates and times. Fridays 3:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m., Saturdays 11:00 a.m. until 11:00 p.m., and Sundays 11:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. That's when the businesses are actually open. And during those weekends only, October the 4th through 6th, 8th, and 18th through the 20th. And then these are just pictures from previous years. And then for all town events information, go to fortmillsc.gov/townevents and follow Town of Fort Mill on social media.
Wonderful. As anyone could see in this presentation, there are tremendous numbers of employees that work hard to ensure this health and safety along with the enjoyment of our public. It is a perfect way to enjoy the fall weather, the football season, the camaraderie that comes with being in a small town. And I just hope and pray that everyone will be safe and remember that pedestrians are out and about and take care and enjoying. One of my colleagues here, Mr. Moody, was traveling throughout the state some this past week, and he would send pictures of parks and facilities in other communities. And, you know, they're very nice, but it really made me realize how very fortunate we are and what a wonderful place Fort Mill is. So I hope everyone will be safe, travel safely, and watch out for those pedestrians. Council members, do you have any comments, any questions for Jacana? Let's hope the weather holds well.
Yes.
Keep this.
Yes, please, please. I'm liking it.
Fault's fault.
Thank you, Jacana, and all of you that work in the events arena and in the public utilities and the Parks and Rec Department and Police Department and the Fire Department. And just thank you. We appreciate you. Old Business Item Number One, Second Reading and Ordinance Annuating York County Tax Map Numbers 738-0000-063 and a portion of 738-0000-062, containing approximately 5.25 acres located at the intersection of Fort Mill Parkway and Holbrook Road. This is in Councilman Moody's Ward. And Penelope, you are our subject matter expert. Schnee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The applicant notified staff to defer this reading until the October 14th council meeting. We're still waiting for the updated analysis, and it was not completed in time for this packet.
All right. Do we need to vote on that, Barry? Since it was a request? Do I have a motion for this deferral?
Make a motion to defer to October 14th.
14th, mhm.
I'll say that.
So I have a motion to defer and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move then to Old Business Item Number Two, Public Hearing and Second Reading and Ordinance Amending Budget for the Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina for the fiscal year beginning October the 1st, 2023, and ending September the 30th, 2024. The amendment number is 24-3. Eric Davis is our wizard, so we're very happy to have him. But Eric, if you don't mind, I'll open that public meeting first and we'll see where we go. Public meeting is officially opened. Do we have anyone that would like to speak to this? Public meeting is officially closed. I love this hammer.
Love it.
All right, Mr. Wizard, what you got?
So, thank you, Mayor. If I truly was a wizard, 66 to 20 would not have happened Saturday night. I'll just go ahead and say that. You're welcome.
Oh, dear.
66 to 20. I believe our, I believe our football team was mentally stressed from study hall.
I'm sure.
They studied too much. So, yeah. So, yes, moving on. Budget Amendment 24-03 is in the amount of $450,000 for making improvements to town-owned property in 23 North White Street. This budget amendment will help facilitate just needed general repairs and maintenance to the building, specifically roof, electrical systems, and fire alarm systems. We do have a pool of money in deferred maintenance to help with 205 North White and what we thought was 123 North White as well. But our bond counsel had advised us that since 123 North White is more of a private-use facility, we need to just recognize some other funds to use that. So that's what we're doing tonight.
All right.
I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Anyone have any questions for Eric?
Just to clarify, that's the 23-24 budget we're doing amendment.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I want to make sure that was clear. Yeah.
So current budget year ends at the end of this month?
Yes.
September. Okay. All right.
Everybody clear on the numbers and the dates and the years? All right. Any other questions for Eric on this particular item?
Make a motion to approve Old Business Item Number Two.
Second. I have a motion to approve and a second. Old Business Item Number Two. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you. All right. New Business Item, Number One, First Reading and Ordinance to Adopt the Budget for the Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina for the fiscal year beginning October the 1st, 2024, and ending October the 30th, 2025. Carrie Vargo, you are our subject matter wizard.
I'm not sure how to follow up after a wizard, but I'm going to give this a shot.
Okay, you can be the czar.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start off just by acknowledging and thanking everyone that was involved in the development of this budget. Many of those people are here this evening. It's our department heads, our staff, and our assistant town managers, Eric Davis, the wizard, and Chris Pettit. They really did a phenomenal job. It was a team effort, and I was incredibly impressed at how well everything came together. I'd also like to thank the mayor and all of council for your leadership and guidance, really identifying the community needs, community wants, and planning for not only the present, the next year, but in the long term, really what the community's looking to need, and ensuring that we're being prudent about how we're spending our money. So kudos to everybody. We really appreciate all your efforts. Thank you. So budget overview comparison to 23-24. So the budget this year, the general fund budget is $39,208,590. The utilities fund, formerly known as the gross revenue fund, $20,066,000. You see various other funds, stormwater fund, revenue hospitality tax fund, accommodations, all our special revenue funds. The total consolidated budget totals $64,437,090. This slide just shows combined budget summary by fund. Again, the general fund is just under 61%. Utilities fund is just over 31%. And then special revenues funds, 5.7%. The only thing I will caution when looking at this is the capital projects fund is not yet in front of council. We expect to put that in front of this group in October. That will be a significantly sized budget number, so that'll skew these numbers just ever so slightly. So general fund highlights, revenue highlights, total projected revenues, again, $39,208,590. That's an increase of $7.674 million or 24.3% over fiscal year 23-24. You see the contributing factors there, really driven by an increase in property tax of $1.958 million. Investment income, the wizard, $1,492,000. In all seriousness, kudos to Eric because across all funds, the revenue funds are right around $5 million when you take everything into consideration, and that really is a significant revenue stream. So that's really a job very, very well done. An increase in vehicle tax of $400,000 and business licenses of $300,000. This slide just really shows you in a different way where our revenue's coming from. 43% of our general fund revenue comes from the real property tax. 15% comes from business privilege, 7% from the solid waste and recycling fee, and 6% from the utility fund management fee, transfer from the utility fund over to the general fund. This slide shows millage. You can see dating back to '09, 10, mills were at 86 all the way through 2019, 2020, at which time there was a reassessment. The millage rate this year is proposed to stay the same as last year, so we're proposing 85.7 mills to support this budget. Expenditure highlights, total projected expenditures equal revenue at $39,208,590. So we're in balance. This includes the addition of 18 additional full-time positions in the general fund budget and five in the utilities fund. So you see there an assistant project manager for absolutely all the projects that we have going on, an additional FTE in HR, deputy fire marshal, planner, utility billing specialist, an IT director, GIS analyst, an SRO supervisor in the police department, school resource officer supervisor, three additional police dispatchers. That will facilitate two police dispatchers on each shift, an analyst for police accreditation, and six school resource officers are proposed to be grant-funded. Those particular positions will not be filled unless we get that grant. So if we get two, funding for two, we'll hire two. Funding for four, we'll hire four, and so on. We don't expect to know that until probably at least January, so we'll keep you up to date on that. So expenditure highlights included in this budget is a 3% cost of living increase for all employees, as well as a 3% bucket for performance-based salary increases. So we will conduct performance reviews across the entire organization and look to make performance-based salary increases effective, hopefully with January 1st. We're going to get that process done as quickly as we can. That process is being led by Becky Link and Marin in human resources. They're doing a phenomenal job, so I have no doubt we'll hit our mark there. Some of the exciting things that are also included in this year's budget include the compensation study, which is going to look at all compensation, time off, salary, benefits, et cetera, across the organization. A comprehensive plan update, incredibly exciting, that really sets the vision for the community for the next 10 years. A downtown master plan, which goes along with that comprehensive plan update. So you folks are going to be very, very busy this next year. Downtown master plan, downtown mobility study, and a master parks plan. So we're really looking to set the vision in the direction of the organization moving forward so that we have a clear understanding of where we're going and where our monies are going to be going. This slide highlights expenditures by department, really nothing unusual based on my experience here. 33% of our general fund expenditures are spent in the police department, 15% in the fire department. Those are the two by far largest departments, again, very, very common across municipal organizations. And then there's various other departments that are, that make up smaller pieces of the pie. If anybody has any questions while I'm ranting about, please, by all means, interrupt me and let me know. I'd be happy to answer them. So we're now in the utility fund, again, formerly known as the gross revenue fund. Total projected revenues and expenditures are $20,066,590. You see the revenue notes there. Note, it's fairly equally distributed amongst water and sewer. So water sales, $7.1 million, water taps, no worries. Water taps, $1.5 million. Sewer sales, again, just over $7.1 million. Sewer taps, a little less at $800,000. And again, there's that investment income we spoke about earlier at $2 million, so Expenditure highlights, again, we are in balance. This includes five additional full-time employees in this particular fund. There are two, I'm sorry, three on the water side, two meter technicians and a hydrant and valve maintenance operator, and two on the sewer side, one locator and one pump station technician. We're going to do everything we can to hire these, this particular fund and this type of activity. We're having a great deal of difficulty hiring. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, there are currently 10 open positions in, across those two departments. So very, very difficult. We're going to continue to budget for them in hopes that we can recruit, but know that it is difficult. Again, fairly equally distributed amongst water and sewers. Water and sewer administration, $7.715 million. Water maintenance at just under $3 million. Sewer treatment, $1,696,100. Sewer maintenance, $2.677 million. And debt at $4.879 million. So again, no proposed increase in the tax millage. There are a limited number of recommended changes in the fees, one of which is a 4% increase in base and volumetric water rates. That's tied to or based on a 4% increase in the cost of our bulk purchasing of water. And then under utility accounts, we're proposing to remove the credit check and associated fee and change the solid waste, the utility activation fee. So solid waste would be $50 activation and a $50 deposit. Water and wastewater is a $50 activation fee and a $100 deposit. The solid waste activation fee would be waived if you are activating a complete utility account, which includes solid waste water and wastewater. Stormwater utility fee, total projected, I'm sorry, stormwater utility fund, total projected revenues and total projected expenditures are $1,212,500. Highlights is just standard operations in the Burgess Creek watershed study. That's our portion of that particular study. There is no proposed change in the stormwater utility fee. Capital projects fund, again, currently totals $250,000. That includes sidewalk improvements of $100,000, White's Road sidewalk project of $150,000. And as I stated earlier, staff's currently finalizing the 24-25 capital projects budget. We expect to have that in front of council in October. We're working to, I'll say tweak or refine our capital improvement plan, so that's in place for the next, you know, anywhere from 10 to 20 years. And we're working on infrastructure coordination. That on top of roadways that we know we can repair and pave. That on top of roadways that we know we can repair and pave that don't need stormwater repairs, water, sewer replacements, et cetera. We're working across departments to ensure that if we know water and wastewater infrastructure needs to be replaced, we're going to do that and plan at the same time to address needed stormwater improvements, roadway repair and roadway repaving at that same exact location. That will obviously avoid paving or repairing and paving a road, and then having to go back in there and dig it up at a later day. Special Revenue Funds all show as balanced. You can see them here. I'm not going to read them all unless anybody has a particular question. They're in balance. No issues or concerns in any of the Special Revenue Funds at this point. Anybody have any questions on the Special Revenue Funds? Might want to highlight more. All right, again, I open it up to questions, but the most important thing is I just really want to thank those that were involved in the development of the budget. Again, it was a team effort. We met, staff met with each and every council person at different times. Our department heads were intimately involved. The Assistant Town Managers just did a phenomenal job putting this all together, and it's only going to get better from here, so I thank everybody involved. Any questions?
No, but I would like to make a comment. I think for those that aren't here in attendance this evening, but will watch this later in the week, I think it's terribly important to recognize that this council and this staff has begun to turn the ship. We have begun to take a step, not a leap yet, but a step, towards being intentional rather than totally reactionary. This is something that this council has desired for some time, and without the hard work and the new folks that we have on staff, we would not be able to do this. It is a dream come true for me to hear that we're going to look at how can we make replacement ahead of schedule so that we don't have to do the work twice in our infrastructure. We hear many times over that people worry about the infrastructure. This is a real step towards ensuring that we have in place what's needed to continue the excellent service that we have. The additional employees, I have seen it absolutely proof that adding new people with the skills that we need has made a huge difference in our ability to move forward. So I want to compliment and thank my council members for hanging in there, and Kerry and his staff for getting us to where I can actually see movement in a positive direction on all the items that we so much wanted to see. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank everybody that was involved. Appreciate all your efforts.
I have one question, if you got a second.
By all means.
So on Slide fifteen, Utility Accounts, so walk me through that. So we were moving a credit check, so when, did people, when they came in to sign up, we would run a credit check on them, we were waiving that, and instead they'll pay a fee?
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to understand. Sure, no, great question. So there's currently an activation fee, if I'm not mistaken, it was twenty-five dollars. Then we charged an additional amount, I believe twenty-five dollars, for the credit check. We're never going to deny service. Doesn't really matter what that credit check says. So we're going to increase the cost of the initial activation from twenty-five to fifty, which essentially serves, it's an additional deposit, it's administrative processing, et cetera. We're just trying to do away with an unneeded step, because again, we're not going to deny service anyway.
Okay.
And I want to make sure that people that hear that understand, this doesn't mean we won't cut off service for non-payment and other reasons.
Just won't initially deny.
This is for initial service. This is new service to the town. So we want to work with people to ensure that they get the service, but it does not affect the actions that are taken necessarily afterwards if someone doesn't pay.
Important distinction.
It is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Kerry, I just want to kind of follow up on what the mayor said. I'll use a few different words, but I think we've become proactive as opposed to reactive, and that's something we've been desperately trying to do. There's a lot of, it looks real simple for you to just kind of go through the slides, but we know how much work and time and sweat and tears and all the other stuff to go through it. I think it's a great plan to, we're supporting the growth of our community, we're supporting our employees, and we're doing all this without a millage tax increase. You kind of blushed over that. There's additional funds that's come in because of things that have gone on. And, but I think it's just phenomenal, and I think the mayor said we've turned, turned, what was the phrase you used? But I think we're making great progress in moving forward, because this one example was trying to about the roads, because that's one of the things here, there's water leak around town, how it takes so long to get it fixed. Well, we're actually, now are putting a plan in place how we can be proactive and deal with them. So I just want to say thank you to everybody, because it's a major step forward that we're very all excited about.
Yeah, it's not just a break, fix budget, but it's a visionary budget, I feel like, probably one of the largest ones we've had since I've been here in nine years. And I think when you surround yourself with good talent, right, that's sitting all across this room, that's what results that you get, right? And our citizens and taxpayers will reap the benefits of you guys for years to come, and I appreciate each and every one of you and the efforts that it took to put this budget together. Thank you.
I think it thrills me to see in that figure, I know that it was comprised of a few different slides, but almost five million dollars in interest. That's for the people. Right, for the people that are, you know, paying into the town and are affected by this budget, it should be thrilling to see, you know, kind of that growth paying for growth in the purest form, so that was exciting. That's great money management, and thank you guys for what you're doing. Really appreciate it, Eric.
Well, good. All right, I need a motion to...
Are we going to go over the ordinance, the budget ordinance itself?
I think...
Barry, do we need to do that? Is this all part of it?
No, I think it's just a presentation.
Okay, so then I have one question on the budget ordinance then. And Chris, you might be, on the Parks and Recs page, this is in the ordinance itself. It's on Page fifteen, I think, is the Parks and Rec. And anyway, we have, that's where the rental fees are, and we have a rental fee for Walter-Elisha Park, but what do we, I didn't think we rented out anything at Walter-Elisha.
That's for, like when we have, we do have some events that do rent out. It's not a park that we typically do rent out, but some private events, we didn't do them this year, so I can't think of them off the top of my head.
Would that be the field, the amphitheaters not?
We do not rent the amphitheaters.
Okay, that's why I was going to make sure, because I see it listed, and it doesn't say what it is, this hundred fifty for two, first two hours, and I just didn't understand that, because I thought there was nothing there that we rented. I knew the amphitheater was not.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to get clarification on, that's why I was...
And I think clarification is necessary, but if you would have, and I know you did, but for those that don't see these things, we are working towards a full comprehensive plan review, a park strategy. I think all of those things are up for our own questions and our own desires for what is the best use for all of our properties, so all good for now.
And with that, I'll make a motion to adopt, to approve first reading of the budget for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
And I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you so much. Business item number two, an ordinance to raise revenue by setting the tax millage for the town of Fort Mill, South Carolina for the tax year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and for the fiscal year ending September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Kerry, it's you again.
Beyond the presentation that I had, I really don't have much other than to say that the millage rate is established at eighty-five point seven, and there's no change from the previous year.
All right, that means no, no...
No increase.
No increase this year. Questions? I need a motion for this item, new business item number two.
Make a motion to accept new business item number two.
I'll second.
And I have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you so much, and that's great news for our community.
I was saying, bless you, my son.
Yes.
When every other entity in the country is going up, quit to raise taxes as they answer, and we're able to maintain.
Absolutely. We're working harder.
Absolutely.
New business item number three, Resolution, Accepting the Streets Within the Pecan Ridge Subdivision. You say pecan, I say pecan. You go right ahead. Phases one through three into the town of Fort Mill Street Maintenance System. Penelope, welcome back.
Yes, ma'am. This is a resolution accepting the Streets of Pecan Ridge subdivision. We do have a non-maintenance agreement for stuff that, like landscaping cul-de-sacs, that has been recorded today with York County. Should Town Council vote to approve this resolution tonight, accepting the streets, the developer would enter into a one-year warranty period during which time they're responsible for any maintenance to the streets, and then upon the closing of the warranty period, the town would take over the maintenance responsibility for the streets. This is kind of unique also, because I guess back in twenty sixteen, this, all roads were recorded, and they followed the process of paying the inspection fee. So this is like one of the newer subdivisions that actually had to pay, and that fee was paid for the inspection fee and the surety bond. One correction to my staff report, I did, they're not a hundred percent. There's one little lot left out of the two hundred that has been built. So this is just for, this is for resolution to either approve or to not approve.
Penelope, this is a good opportunity to kind of talk through this, because my neighborhood's a good example. The roads were not built to speed. You know, there's some developers who do a better job or not, so they were not built to code. They got turned over to the HOA, which really is not a functional HOA, and the town had to, basically had to take them over just for maintenance, because the taxpayers were not involved in that. So these, you're saying, were, we were involved in the beginning to make sure they were built to SEDOT standards. The warranty is there in case something happens in this one year, and it's, I guess I'm trying to make, it's nuts and soup and nuts, different, different, you know, because people don't understand why some roads are in the shape they're in. Well, you know, they have to be put in right in the beginning.
So the town has established a street acceptance policy, and they, this is a newer subdivision, and they followed all the steps to get it approved. You know, the departments that really, the engineers and the technical people that really go out there, is Utilities, Brad Prevett is a person from the Utilities Department that I communicate, and so Public Works and Utilities Departments has reviewed the roads. So there is a check and balance process for the street acceptance.
That's great, because this is probably one of the first times I've, I can tell you a bunch of the others that were done fifty years ago, and then they're, and they're in bad shape, and it's because they don't have the base, or they don't have, you know, drainage or whatever. So I thank you for clarifying that, and there's people, as the mayor said, will watch this later on, might understand, because sometimes it's very confusing why these roads are being taken, or they're in good shape and these are not, so.
I think it's probably one of the single most complex issues within our community is who owns the road? Who's responsible? Because as Ben and I said on our fats, I think, Ben, it was a good experience for you to see the complexities that roll out on where does the money come from, who holds ultimate accountability? And I think that within the town, Penelope, what we've been able to do under the great leadership that we have, we've begun to tweak our process so that we don't take on anything that's not ready and right, and it minimizes the cost to the community and to the town. So I'm very pleased to see progress in this approach, and all across the board, we seem to be taking those steps. So thank you.
Yeah, and just also, if this gets approved, the next step for me is to send emails to the various departments, Finance Department, to know, you know, these are the roads that we've accepted. This is the cost estimate, because once we accept it, the town has to budget for future years for maintenance. So we are doing this check and balances even after council approves, and then notify fire, police about those roads being our roads.
So the, I know Lisa would ask this if she was here. I'm going to ask it for her in her absence. So we can, and for my own curiosity, we can accept this even though, and I'm not nitpicking, just, then there's one unbuilt lot?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
It's probably not a buildable lot, given that most of the others have been built out long before now.
And Melissa Birkin from LGIs here, I don't know if you want to, I think it was Lot one oh four.
Sure, yeah, there's, there's one lot left, Lot one oh four, it's in the cul-de-sac. It is a basement lot. It backs up to one of the permanent VMPs within Pecan Ridge, and during the process of converting that to a permanent VMP, and prior to getting final as-built approval from the town, we wanted to make sure we didn't cut off major machinery access to that VMP. So we've held it for now, but plan on planning permits probably next month, and having it built out by the end of the year, if not January.
Well, given that amount of information, do we need to defer this item until that lot has been built, so that we do not take on road systems that large equipment has traveled across?
Given the warranty period of one year, as long as they're finished within that one-year warranty period, anything they break, or any other defects that occur within that one-year period, we do a walk of all the streets, and we get brand-new streets at the end of that warranty period again, so.
And we have the surety bond.
How much is that?
Oh, gosh, I don't, let me see, damn necessary. So they paid, they paid for the acceptance fee was fourteen thousand, four hundred and forty-eight. Let me see. I have the bond estimate. So they provided me a construction cost estimate of two point, two million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand and twenty-nine oh five.
In your experience, or Chris, and yours, have we accepted a road system without it being fully built out prior to this one?
We have, yes, mayor.
We have?
Yes, mayor. Our policy is a minimum of either eighty percent build out.
I just think that's important to know. Thank you.
So if, during that construction, just clarify, so if during that construction, a crane comes in, tears up a big hunk of the road, and it's month number thirteen, are they still responsible for it, because the damage was done during construction, or how would that work?
I mean, certainly, if it's some obvious situation where some, someone has damaged the road, we have conversations. But yeah, anything that occurs in that twelve-month period, whether it be related to this construction or not related to this construction, because of the warranty period, the developer's still on the hook for that.
So do you have any heartburn on?
I do not.
Okay.
Thank you, Plankton Department, for all the work you've done to get policy like this, to get it to that point where it protects, again, the taxpayers of Fort Mill.
Absolutely.
And Chris Pett, I know you're in on early stages of that, so.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
He's the one that established that many years ago, so thanks, Chris.
Good improvement, good improvement.
And I think, let's follow up on that, the taxpayers, the residents in there paying their taxes, they don't need to get stuck in the middle of this. And we have some neighborhoods to where the developer changed, and the people live there, they've been paying their taxes, and the roads are, they're kind of caught in a catch-22, and I'm glad we have process and procedures so we can do this and move forward, so.
Any further questions? Hearing none. Do I have a motion on this new business item number three?
I'll make a amendment, to approve new business item number three.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second for new business item number three. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, thank you so much. Penelope, you might as well stay where you are. New business item number four, First Reading, An Ordnance, Correcting the Zoning Classification Listed within Ordnance Number twenty twenty-four dash oh two dash, nothing. Penelope?
Yes, so council had first reading and publicly heard on a request for annexation of nine fifty, how can I pronounce it?
Navasi?
Navasi, I don't want to mispronounce it, Navasi Trail, on January eighth of twenty twenty-four. The requested zoning designation for this property with application was noted in the staff report, as well as presented to council as R twenty-five, one family residential. Second hearing was held February of this year. Second hearing was held February of this year. The ordinance was signed off and finalized. Upon further review, it was discovered that the version of the ordinance included within council's materials mistakenly and inadvertently noted the rezoning was for MXU. And so, the version of this ordinance was signed, noted the zoning designation as MXU. So, we are now trying to amend, correct the ordinance so we can reflect what was presented as R twenty-five.
Got it.
So, just clarification, so our second reading, our documents hit MXU?
The ordinance.
The ordinance did?
The actual ordinance.
Not what got signed, or what got signed was MXU. I'm just surprised that we would have all missed that.
It happened, yeah.
It did, yeah. So, you're saying our packet had, I'm really, I was really surprised when I read that.
I was disappointed in myself.
Ben and I both read that stuff.
Y'all were on planning, remember?
Yeah, I was, I was shocked, yeah.
Oh, I was too, because, you know, I wrote the, you know.
Because I have a whole, I have a whole list of mix that I, and nitpicking stuff that I could come up with, you know. So, anyway, I just want to make clarification. I can see the last one got signed, it just, you didn't see it.
No, no.
Okay, I just want a clarification.
It was in the back.
Ben, you got to do better.
Thank you.
I love it.
All right.
All right, Moody, straighten us out.
I need a motion.
I make a motion to accept new business item number four.
I have a motion to approve new business item number four.
I'll second.
And I have a second from Councilman Garrison. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All righty, thank you so much. That was very good. New business item number five, resolution to authorize the Municipal Association of South Carolina to act as a claimant agency for the collection of debt on behalf of the town of Fort Mill in accordance with the Set Off Debt Collection Act. Eric Davis.
The Wizard.
The Wizard. It's going to spick, you know that, right?
Thank you, mayor. This item is, it's a resolution, it's an annual resolution, which just allows the town to department with the Municipal Association of South Carolina to go through the debt set-off process. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about that process.
Somewhat of formality, right?
It's a formality, but it does allow us, when people choose not to pay the bills owed to the town, it does allow us to intervene and acquire some of their tax returns and what have you to, to make sure the town's made a home.
That's right. Any questions on this particular item? I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve new business item number five.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you so much. We have no information discussion items for this evening, however, we do have an executive session item. Please note, council may take action on executive session items listed on the agenda when they come back into public session. Executive session, item number one, receipt of legal advice for proposed contractual arrangements with the Fort Mill History Museum. I do need a motion for us to move into executive session.
Make a motion to move into executive session? I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you so much. We will return. Okay. I need a motion.
To come out of executive session?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to come out of executive session and re-enter public session. Need a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. Let the record reflect that no vote was taken in executive session. All right, guys, we are at the end of our meeting, and it was a very productive one and a very positive one. Mr. Hudgens, what do you have for the good of the whole?
Just a challenge, I think, for me internally and everybody that may be watching or listening, get out and walk. I mean, it's this time of year right now, go meet somebody. It's in our community, I mean, I've been around our community, or lived in Fort Mill Park for twenty-five years, and just still don't know everybody out there, so it's a great opportunity to, that's kind of what we base this town on. We talk about small-town hospitality and knowing, knowing that neighbor, and I think it's a great opportunity to kick in for now. I would not have said that two months ago when it was ninety degrees at eight o'clock or something, but, anyway. Also want to give a special thanks to, it was mentioned earlier, for the scarecrow call. Public Works setting the posts, that's a hundred and fifty scarecrows, that's planting, that's digging, a hundred and fifty holes, packing it in, laying the posts, and then going back, pulling them back up, repairing the holes, putting down seed, putting the posts away. I mean, it's a process. So, when everybody enjoys that, think about all that's involved with that, so, big, big, appreciate it. A lot of thanks to those guys.
Reminds me of when I asked my husband to put the tree up so I can decorate.
Right. Put it up a hundred and fifty times.
All righty, thank you. Mr. Garrison?
The most impressive part about those polls, they're all straight.
They are.
Every single one of them, dead on, all directions. No, just October, I mean, October in Fort Mill is awesome. Just seeing everybody outside, it's like, it's like a Hallmark movie, except without the big-city person coming, yeah, coming down to come back to hometown. But it's perfect. I mean, the weather's perfect, everything else. I wore my Bama stuff, got my Nick Saban hat here. He retired it, yes, my son, he was born in February two thousand and ten. Nick Saban came in two thousand and seven. My son's never seen football without Nick Saban. So, it's one of those where he's grown up into it, heck, even, you see this, he was born, within five minutes, he had a, he had a little Bama cap on his head, so. Been a big part of our family. Met him multiple times, Miss Terry, just, just awesome folks. My favorite Nick Saban quote, "If you want to make everyone happy, don't be a leader, sell ice cream." So, think about that. That's it, roll tide.
Nice philosophy there. Mr. Wolf?
So, I kind of follow up on the conversation. I'm excited the Scarecrow Crawl is coming. I think it's a great event. Weather's nice. Like I said, mentioned earlier, I think it's great. You see all the young people out with pushing strollers and walking around, people downtown, it's just a great event. And, yeah, Ben's called out the Public Works, there's a lot of work to get all that stuff done. Along with that, schools are back in session, cooler weather's upon us, so a lot of people will be out in the evenings walking and doing those things, so slow down. Look forward to getting the Hardee's thing wrapped up. There's a lot of excitement about that. Hopefully, we can get it done before some of the bigger events. I know, appreciate all the work that's going under that, you know, it's, it moves fast, kind of building a house, it goes real fast, and it goes slow, because you're waiting on somebody else, so that's, thanks for all the work being done there. And there again, just a great job on the budget, you know, it's, I think, it's, it's a, you know, it's a step, it's a progressive step. Things we're making plans for the future, so I'm just very eager for us to continue on that, looking forward to the, when we start talking about capital budget, so we can start looking at some of our projects that are underway. So, great, great job, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Moody?
Yeah, good job on the budget, staff, putting everything together. The Wizard, good job.
Wizard.
Eric Davis, another one of his names, but seriously, thank you all in Virginia for everything you do for the town. And I've got a, the first time I ever met Alan Garrison was in the nursery when both our sons were about three months old, no, maybe about ten months old, and this guy walks in, he's like, well, this kid's all decked out in Bama, like bib and onesie and everything. He's like, I tell you what, next weekend, if Alabama wins, your son will wear this Alabama stuff, and my son will wear Gamecock stuff, so. Twenty-ten, Stephen Garcia throws three touchdowns to Alshon Jeffrey, so I'm geared up. I've got my son's onesie, and I'm going to give it to this new dad I met, and he wasn't there that day. So, I'm going to make a bet that if the Gamecocks beat Alabama this year, I will wear an Alabama jersey. You'll wear, you'll wear a Gamecock jersey, I'll wear Alabama.
Absolutely, let's do it.
All right, I'll live up to it.
As long as Stephen Garcia doesn't play.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Mr. Hales?
Very nice presentation on the budget. Just remember, you only got about eighty-five shopping days left for Christmas.
I knew. All right, I'll do, I do this every year. I perennially ask, we are beginning to see some leaves gather. The fall is upon us, but I've also seen more trash in the last two weeks than I've seen in an entire year. I don't know what's happening with people headed for the recycle center, but you're not tying down your loads. Those loads need to be covered and tied down. The bypass is a mess. And I really have a heart for the people that participate on our second Saturday service and go out and put on a vest and gloves and pick up the trash.
Somebody dumped two bags of diapers on twenty-one the other day.
I saw it. It's, it's just incredible what's out there right now. I know that I have council members that participate on that second Saturday. I'm going to try to do it myself this year, even though I did read an article that baby copperheads are out, and I don't like those. I don't like those, but, you know, it's everybody's responsibility to make our town look good. And it's not just those of us that are kind enough to be willing to go out on the roadside and pick up trash. So, please don't blow your leaves out into the street and clog up the storm gutters. I saw we have another potential hurricane. These things matter, and our utility people that are doing the nice things for us by putting up the posts and making our town beautiful, they can't do everything. So, please have a heart for them, please, and let's do our part to keep our community looking nice. With that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you so much. We appreciate you being here.